Hello, my name is Robert Grill. I live in seventy-seven Sunset Road in Masseter, New York. I assume that the town board is familiar with the Littauer estate. As a resident, I wasn't. I haven't met anybody else yet, that is. On July tenth, two thousand and seven, the town approved Resolution Number five-five-five of two oh seven, authorizing the supervisor to enter into a contract of sale for the proposed purchase of five-ten Split Rock Road, Siosse, New York. Tuesday, July tenth, Oyster Bay Supervisor John Vendetta and the town board authorized the purchase of Hillside Farm, a twenty-six acre Oyster Bay Cove home placed place of the Littauer family, for a bargain sale purchase of five point seven-three million dollars. Supervisor Vendetta and the town intend to open Hillside Farm to the public on a regulated basis and maintain as much of it as it is today, a charming and idyllic reflection of what life used to be like on Long Island. The rooster will continue to crow, the old donkey will graze the backfield, and the thousands of migrating birds that pass each year will find the ponds and fields just as they left them the year before. The overall intent of the acquisition will be to provide historic and environmental education for the residents of the town. Mary Littauer quite sadly died in January of two thousand and six, and the property became part of her estate. A steering committee was formed with the expertise in education, gardening, natural science, museums, history, and public relations. Ideas generated at the first meeting include order education programs for the children centered around the ponds of the Oyster Bay aquifer, a retirement home for horses, a series of classes from botanical to landscape painting, organic farming, historical reenactments in the house, on the grounds, and concerts on the lawn, even an old-fashioned Christmas tree with a candlelit tree. The steering member committees included Linda Mondello and Andrew Rothstein. Andrew Rothstein is the town director of operations overseeing the rehabilitation of the property, which was renamed the farm at Oyster Bay. The roof and windows leak in the sprawling Littauer mansion. The roof and window leaks in the sprawling Littauer mansion have been plugged. A tilting barn has been right and reinforced. Four years after the town of Oyster Bay bought the twenty-six acre Littauer estate in Oyster Bay Cove with environmental bond money, years of deterioration are being reversed and programs for the public expanded. "It's clearly still a work in progress," said Andrew Rothstein, the town director of operations who was overseeing rehabilitation on the property at Split Rock Road, Route twenty-five A. "We're trying to keep the integrity of all the buildings," Rothstein said, "but that comes with a large price tag for restoration, one million fifty-five thousand three hundred and thirty-three dollars since the town took over the property." This was quoted in two thousand and eleven. A steel interior frame has been installed in a barn to keep it from collapsing. The barn will become an education center. A deteriorated shipping coop and barnyard fences have been replaced. The septic water supply and drainage systems have been upgraded. The main house was made weather tight and rewired. Town historian John Hammond moved his office there. Additional uses for the house may include small-scale special events and educational programs. "We knew from the beginning that this was not going to be an active park with baseball fields alight," Rothstein said. "Access has been and probably will remain by appointment only for groups." Rothstein envisions adding stargazing, walking tours, bird and wildlife watching, art classes, architectural education, senior citizen exercise programs, and holiday-related events such as pumpkin preparation. Visitors share the property with caretaker Amanda Bellois-Robert, thirty-four, who represents a fifth generation of the family to serve in that role. The public's, the bullock sprawl of farmland along, excuse me, along Split Rock Road and Oyster Bay Cove has been set, has seen several changes in the five years since Oyster Bay, since the Littauer family sold it to Oyster Bay. The mansion's heating and cooling systems were fixed. Drainage on the grounds was improved. Fire hydrants were installed, and a barn is being renovated for school, for schoolchildren. Officials hope they will eventually gather there for programs. The property was renamed the farm in Oyster Bay after the town purchased it in two thousand and seven for five point eight million to preserve it. Farm renovations have included mostly safety improvements, such as widening the roads to allow emergency vehicles, Rothstein said. "The town did not immediately provide the amount spent on the renovations since two thousand and seven, but the price tag topped one million as of last fall." This audible is written in two twelve. "The current budget crunch was slow improvements, but the revamping of the north barn into a handicap-accessible classroom and the building of public bathrooms could be done by late spring," Rothstein said. Though the farm won't likely ever open to the general public, officials said it will continue to host small groups, such as seniors who come for tai chi and bridge, and the kids who harvest as much as two thousand pounds of fruits and vegetables annually for a food bank. In two thousand and seven, the town hired Linda Mondello via a consulting contract to oversee the preservation of the estate. Joseph Mondello's wife, Linda, a former museum curator, got a consulting contract with Oyster Bay in two thousand and seven to oversee preservation of the twenty-six acre Littauer State in Oyster Bay Cove. She is paid one hundred dollars per hour with a maximum of fifty thousand dollars a year. Linda Mondello had served on a committee to generate ideas of the property and was one of the four people asked to apply for the contract. Not bid, asked. Linda clearly has a passion for Littauer, Vendetto said. According to her LinkedIn profile, Linda Mondello has maintained this contract with the town consecutively from two thousand and seven until present. Mrs. Mondello allegedly occupies an office located at five-ten Split Rock Road with the following phone number: Area Code five-one-six-nine-two-two-zero-zero-one-seven, Extension ten. Ironically, that phone number comes back to Mary Littauer, who's been deceased in two thousand and six. Douglas A. Wilkie has represented himself as an architect and engineer for the town of Oyster Bay and has previously prepared a report on a Littauer state for the town in two thousand and eight. Also in two thousand and eight, a not-for-profit incorporated, not-for-profit, was established, called the New York Inscription Meet. In two thousand and eight, a not-for-profit was incorporated in New York State titled "The Farm at Oyster Bay Incorporated." So today, before we go forward with this, with this resolution, I'd like to know if the town is affiliated, has made any contributions, or has any type of business with this incorporated not-for-profit, The Farm at Oyster Bay? I'd like to know if Linda Mondello has been consecutively employed by the town through use of a personal service agreement, which would indicate her expertise, specialty needed for this employment, or by any other means through which Linda Mondello receives monetary or other payment from the town from two thousand and seven through present. I would also like to know if there have ever been any RFPs issued, has there, has ever been any bidding process for the consulting position occupied by Linda Mondello? I'd like to know whether any resolutions passed in regards to any of these contracts. I couldn't find them. I'd also like to know what is the term of Linda Mondello's contracts? How many times have they been renewed? I'd like to know how much money Linda Mondello has been paid through a town contract in the capacity of consultant of historic preservation while overseeing the preservation of the estate for each calendar year, two thousand and seven through today's date? What work records have been generated by Linda Mondello and submitted to the town to justify her contracts and pay? Mr. Rothstein has been quoted in two thousand and eleven and in two thousand and twelve explaining that one million fifty-five thousand three hundred and thirty-three dollars have been spent since the town took over the property, up to two thousand and twelve. The improvements he mentions to justify the money spent, which I just read to you, are inaccurate. I have visited the property, and I'll release a video tour of the estate grounds later today on my social media site, so everyone can see what that property really looks like and what is not being done there. I'd like to know the total of all the improvements that have completed there, and I'd like to know how much to date the town has paid Douglas A. Wilkie, who we have the resolution on today, to, to pay him some more, okay? I'd like to know how much the town has paid Douglas A. Wilkie as architect and engineer for the town of Oyster Bay since two thousand and seven? The estate is used on a permission-permit basis allegedly. I'd like to know how many functions have, have actually occurred on that estate since two thousand and seven. Obviously, they're keeping records, right? Why doesn't the general public know about this estate, and why is it being properly used by, utilized? In my opinion, the town should not fund another dollar to this farm until these questions have been answered. Would you like to answer any of them now?
I don't know sure if somebody's equipped to do that.
Is Andrew, I saw Andrew Rothstein earlier.
Rob, Rob, Rob. The last I looked, I chaired the meeting. I know you've been directing town employees to appear at meetings, and you're going to decide who answers my question. I'm, I'm the town supervisor. I chair this board, and I'll direct who we need to come call. Andrew, I see you're nodding your head. Can you help us elucidate and answer some of these questions?
Sure, just, just a few things, just to take a step back. Originally, when we purchased the property, it was done under C-Fund. And it was done, if you look back at C-Fund, it's done for two different reasons. One, to preserve property in open space as well as parks. When we had an opportunity to purchase twenty-six acres at that price from the Littauer family, unfortunately, after Mrs. Littauer passed away, it was an opportunity twofold, again, to protect open space and then to look at what we could do park-wise for our community and our residents. As we went into that, Rob, from the beginning, we knew that it was, want to slow down?
No, I'm gonna say, I'm gonna say.
It was going to be used on a limited basis, reason being that it was deep, set deep in residential, and the same concerns we have for other parks that we do and other parklets that we have in town Oyster Bay, it was very important that we respect the wishes of our residents surrounding those houses. We met with the residents, we talked about the different things we were going to do, and from day one, the point was always going to be that there were going to be small programs, exactly what we talked about, from programs for senior citizens, tai chi, bridge, always on a limited and small basis. That was going to be done. That has been going on since, since the property was deemed safe. And your point about one point five billion dollars or whatever that number was, when we bought this property, again, no disrespect to the Littauer family, it was in disarray. There was a lot of work that had to be done early on to make sure it was safe. Exactly what I was quoted in Newsday as saying was exactly what happened. Before we were going to bring anyone in, before the supervisor of the town board would allow us to bring anyone into that property, it was very important that it was deemed safe. Now, when deemed, deemed safe, meaning that we did it in different sections or different quadrants, because otherwise, there's still work going on, as you see and as you pointed out. But, one thing I will tell you is, we have had program after program now, the Girl Scouts, the Boy Scouts. About a month and a half, two months ago, Island Park was here. I'm sure you were here for that town board meeting, when we were sat and cited as being the most active municipality on Long Island. As far as donations of food, a lot of that comes from the Littauer program, from the Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts who grow pumpkins, they do pumpkin picking, they do Christmas decorating, Christmas tree decorating. So there's a lot of programs that go on there.
Andrew, right, the senior art program also?
The senior art program. But again, there are small programs, because that's what the property can handle. But recognize that the other reason that we bought that property was the opportunity to preserve twenty-six acres of pristine property within the town of Oyster Bay that otherwise would have been subdivided.
Not to interrupt what Andy's saying, but it's been preserved as a working farm. If you go there, there are, they had animals, I think, I don't want to give anyone a, but I think the donkey may have died. I don't know what I'm saying.
Not yet, not yet, of course, they passed.
But, there are, there are, I mean, it is a working farm with the type of animals that you want to bring your child to see and see what Long Island looked like. You go there, and there are all these different Girl Scout troops, all working together, all planting, and you walk around, and you see the animals, and you see actual farm work going on. It's important to preserve our, our cultural heritage here, to see that.
And, this, this resolution for twelve point five, twelve thousand five hundred dollars for architectural, architectural work for the foundation of the building? I built, it was built in seventeen forty.
Right, right. I just wanted to ask if you could answer that, Mr. Rothstein?
Hold on, hold on, Rob, because we have a lot of questions on the table. I still have, sure, as long as it's responsive to.
Well, I think it's important to note, Andy, Andy mentioned the C-Fund, okay? I think we should explain what that was all about, what it was meant to be, and how it came to be, so that people understand, you know, what, what the purpose of C-Fund was.
Well, that's very simple. There were three environmental, before this administration took over, and the people you can see sitting here, as incredible as it sounds, the town of Oyster Bay never had an environmental bond act, which was stunning to me, especially in a town that, you know, speaks so frequently to quality of life here. So I think in fairly rapid succession, I think we had three environmental, environmental bond acts, which were done, enacted by representatives. I believe one was in the amount of sixty, and then two more for thirty, right? Am I correct? And all three passed by more than seventy percent. And the purpose of that money, as best as I can remember, was to preserve open space and to also refurbish existing town-held properties, presumably being parks. And with that money, back in, I don't remember what year it was, I thought Rob said it was seven, is that right?
Six, seven, we wrote.
I mean, we made a decision to acquire twenty-six, twenty-six acres of, I guess, what would be called, virgin land or pristine land? I mean, I just couldn't think of a better use of the money. That's what the money was all about. That's what the residents indicated they want us to do, and that's what the residents expressed their satisfaction in what we did at the time. So, I don't think there's any question, there's never, you go next, Rob. I don't think there's any question about, hindsight is wonderful. Obviously, I don't mind telling you, I, I, we kind of read out money. I think there came a point where, when the economic downturn, visit us here in the town of Oyster Bay, I'm talking in the late eleven range, where we, I'd probably loved to have seen more things done at the property, but we just simply couldn't afford them at the time. Does it mean we're not going to do that someday? And I do believe that the time will come when that property may very well be among the centerpieces of our.
I think, I think we're ahead of our.
Yeah, I think we are too. I think it was good judgment to acquire twenty-six. I mean, we could be sitting here on this other application to put, I don't know how many condos or what else on that property, and listening to, you know, or another regional shopping mall, or whatever the case may be. So the town stepped up, I think did the right thing in acquiring the property. The process has been rather slow and arduous, and that's basically, Joe, I don't know if that.
I think, I think it was important for everybody who wasn't here all the time to understand.
Yeah, that's basically how you.
Just to follow up on what the councilman thinks you said, and further than what we want to supervise, I know there are a lot of questions on the table, but one comment was made about the publicness, if that's a word, of the process. In conjunction with everything Andy said, when the town decided how to spend this money and what lands to acquire, it was a very public outreach program to concern citizens and groups. And as with most other programs, there was an attempt to be a balance throughout the town, so that areas both North Shore, South Shore, and Center were, were aided by this. And I believe, from our memory, that the North Shore Land Alliance, we all know who they are, and very well respected, were one of the active participants in this process, particularly with regard to lands on the North Shore. And they nominated several properties their number-one priority. Number-one property that that group wanted was this parcel, and that was their priority. I'm not saying the board didn't encourage it, don't worry, exercise its independent judgment, but it wasn't something that the board or the bureaucracy came up with. This was nominated by people and groups who were dedicated to this type of activity. Just, before we get too far, Phil, I want to get on that record.
Oh, you're right, and actually, you're bringing back a lot of memories. I'm not gonna bore anybody with tears about this, but it was Lisa Ott from the North Shore Land Alliance, who first approached, first approached the town about acquiring the property. And I didn't look forward to it at the time, but I'm, congratulations, I'm glad I did. I walked all twenty-six acres with her, and until you do that, I don't know if you really understand the value of this acquisition, and I never hesitated, once I took that tour, I never looked back. And I think the residents, to this day, are very, very satisfied with the acquisition. So, again, if that helps give you the history. Let's see if we can get more of, you know, it was talked about the RFP process and questions about.
Excuse me, Mr. Supervisor.
Who was done, Andy, can you shed any light on that? Can you help us with that?
Because on the, we did two RFP processes. On November twenty-third.
I'm just trying to get as many questions off the table.
On November twenty-third, we did one RFP, and after it went out, we, we put another one out, and we developed it Thanksgiving weekend, you know, a lot of things, and then we put another RFP out in December, in December, and.
So what year, sir?
November twenty-third, we put the first RFP out this year, okay, for this year, because it's a yearly process.
I'm sorry, this is the RFP for Linda Mondello's contract?
For, for the contract, yes, for that, the store of preservation. And then on December seventh, we put a second one out, because we felt the first one was around Thanksgiving weekend, and December seventh, we put a second one, and there wasn't enough time November twenty-third.
They go out annually?
It goes out annually, yeah.
So there should be a, a history of nine years of contracts with Linda Mondello?
No, 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 guys, whoa, 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 let's go, let's go mad, it's not an annual contract. It's just, it's one contract with extensions.
Extension, extension, that's.
Who knows, well, hold on, who knows if this is a contract? There's, there's a lot of us.
Seven years.
Go back to the beginning, Andrew, and take us through the process.
When, when we looked to do this after we bought the property, RFP went out. I'm going by memory, but I'm going to say it was two years with two extensions.
Okay.
When that ran out, which the commissioner was just talking about, we went out with another one, which went out in November of this past year. There was an issue because we felt it was enough time, only because of how the Thanksgiving holiday fell. So we extended that and put out another RFP. So this has been done exactly where the other ones have been done, yes.
Again, for one year with one extension?
I, I, I have to look, but I'm going to say two years with two extensions.
Okay, does that mean? I'm sorry, hold on, hold on, Rob, let's, give, don't be more, let me just see if we can get the initial data, to try to get this straight, that's all. Who did the, the RFPs were sent out to, to whom?
Well, they were sent out to.
I'm sorry.
Advertizing Newsday.
Right.
I don't know if it's advertising, going on with businesses, but it was absolutely advertising Newsday.
Okay.
And then, again, I'm going to memory, but it went out to four or five different people who felt possibly to qualify for, along with Newsday.
Okay.
This contract's for thirty-four months.
But this one is for thirty-four months. I'm, I'm sorry, so what you're saying is you sent the RFP out to four or five people directly? Is that what you're saying?
Along with advertising news.
So only four or five people knew about this RFP?
No, with advertising news.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. That, that, oh, I just want one last question, before I just, I just want to make this clear. I know you understand where the town got the funds to purchase the property, but since you purchased it, all, all the capital improvements, the renovations that you've been working on, are those, is that money coming out of the funds, or is that money coming out of the town? Once you bought it with these bonds, all, all the additional work that you've done since you purchased the property, I don't, I'm.
We're paying for that, is that.
Rob, just address the chair, so we.
I'm sorry.
No, that's all right. I, I would assume that a lot of it was done by the town, I would think.
The town, right?
I would, I would have to go back and look. I mean, in the early days, we might have had some money left in the environmental bond act to do it, but I, I mean, I don't recall that someone had to check. Okay, so, hold on, let's move on to that, right?
It's a town park, so.
No, 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 I don't think anybody's disputing, I don't think that's what, he's not asking, but it was legitimate to do it once, but yeah, he's addressed where the money came from. Am I right, Rob?
Yes.
Yeah. Obviously, the acquisition was under the environmental bond act. Self-sequent improvements, some might have come from the environmental bond act, but I don't know, we, we just need to, I would suspect it was a combination of both, because I know there came a point where we were, we were done with the environmental bond act.
With regards to, with regards to this contract, Frank, with regards to this contract.
Who, Frank?
Frank Cosamino. I think, I don't think we've ever come to, to full amount. Is that accurate? Like, we've never even.
That's the maximum amount, so we did not hit the.
Right. So each time, each year, it's been something less than, than that, right?
I think she's talking about.
Which contract?
The one that we're going on today. In the past, we've never hit.
I'm sorry, I'm, today's not, you're not voting on Linda Mondello, today you're voting on the architect, Doug Wilkie.
Right.
I, I understand that, but with regards to the contract itself, I'm, I'm being told that you've never hit the amount.
We don't know, no, you're probably right, only because those amounts are.
You're right, Joe.
Not the received amount. We, I don't think we have the figures here, but we can get them.
Okay, so, I'm sorry, but some of the questions I had were.
I don't know how many we hit, I think we got a few of them anyway.
Okay, this, this, this incorporated not-for-profit, the farm at Oyster Bay Incorporated, does that have anything to do with the town of Oyster Bay? Or we make any contributions or, or any type of business with this not-for-profit at all?
I don't believe that, I don't think so, but I would prefer to, to go to the clear.
So we have to.
Yeah, Andrew, would you know?
We'll, we'll look into it, but I'm going to go and say no.
Okay, so, so Linda Mondello does occupy an office at five-ten South, Split Rock Road, and that is the correct phone number for it?
I don't know about the phone number, I know she has an office there, but I don't know about the phone number. What happened when you called, supervisor?
Actually, it said you've reached the office of Split Rock Farm for Linda Mondello, push ten, for Richard Porcelli, push eleven, and I understand Richard Porcelli Junior's got a job over there.
Yeah.
So I pushed ten, and it says, if you'd like to speak, it's not her voice, but if you'd like to speak to Linda Mondello, leave a message. I left a message, but she didn't call me back.
Yeah, but you said earlier that the number didn't go to Linda Mondello, that it went to.
No, 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 the number's five-one-six-nine-two-two-zero-one-one-seven.
No, 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 Rob, I'm not being argumentative. When you first made your statement, I believe you said that you dialed the number, it was not answered by Linda Mondello, but it was answered by Mary Littauer.
No, 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 I'm sorry, you misunderstood.
Okay.
I, I can read it, you know, I said, the number, the number is, is for Split Rock Farm, Linda Mondello, but I said, but the phone, for some reason, the phone bill comes back to Mary Littauer, so it kind of like confuses me, how could a dead person be paying the phone bill, but that's another issue.
Now, you know what, well, my, after my father passed away for years, the number of the neighbor made it in his account, I don't know.
But that's in the same family.
What's that?
That's like in the same family, though.
It has to do with yours. It's not a fourth daughter.
All right, so, um. Okay, I think everything else that I asked for, I'm also doing a frame of information request on, so.
All right, good.
That about goes Split Rock, but I really suggest that you take a look, a look at it, because the place is a mess. And there's two animals here, there's a horse, or three, two goats and a horse, there's no, there's nothing, there's nothing there at all. It's, it's actually quite hazardous to walk around there, the steps are all unlevel, but you can see it later on the video.
Obviously, you're not a, you're not a farm guy.
Actually, the funny thing is, along with the deal, I understand that the caretakers that live there, part of the deal when the town purchased it was that the caretakers got employed by the town of Western Bay, and the husband, the wife, and the son are all on the town payroll, they make a little bit more than a hundred thousand dollars a year. They get to live in that house, they get to live in that house and maintain that farm. And I'll tell you what, I own the farm, that's my dream. I would, I would live in that house and maintain that farm for half of what you're paying them. You can hire me tomorrow.
Hold on a second.
I'll look for a third supervisor next.
You want to hire him now, is that?
Amanda Melos, who is the caretaker of the farm, lives on the property. Robert, if you look back at some of the articles, there was a dedicated Newsday article about her, because she is fifth generation on.
I have one here.
Okay. So then, so then you would know that she is the sole employee. Yes, her husband lives there. Her son, I want to say is four or five years old, so I'm pretty sure it's on the town board. But I will tell you that she, she is fifth generation, she knows the property, and it was a great opportunity for us, especially when we were, when we purchased that property, to keep that go the same way it was. So it was a very, very good fit. Again, if you look back at the Newsday article, you see that.
Continue.
You're welcome.
So she's the owner? Did you want to go on to seventy-eight and?
No, whatever you, you chose for.
That was, no, all right.
You know, seventy-four.
Yes, please, thank you. I have seventy-eight now.
We're talking about this property at fifty-five Motor Parkway here. It's, it's a, right now, it's an empty lot that lies adjacent to.
Allen.
Ellis, Ellis?
Allen.
Allen, thank you very much. How far?
It's, it's the site of the old Liberty Industrial Finishing Plant, and it's situated on the north side of Motor Parkway, bounded on the west by its town park, Elwood, W. Allen Park, and bounded on by the new, relatively new stop shop.
So from what I saw, back in oh-seven, the town passed the Resolution one forty-seven, they had, they asked for a hearing to do a condemnation of seven of the sixteen total acres. And then, in March and April, we had the hearings. On, in June of 2007, the town then passed a resolution to acquire seven of the...
Rob, keep going.
Yeah, thank you. Seven of the, seven and a half of the sixteen acres. In 2010, sorry. In 2010, I'm sorry, Tom, we didn't buy?
We did pay.
Okay. Okay, in 2010, there was a resolution passed, 437, the restitution, resolution was claimed to ongoing litigation, later to environmental remediation and litigation at the Liberty Industrial site. And then in two, 2011, they passed two more resolutions authorizing appraisal services. So what I'm curious to find out is, um, how much did we, if we did acquire the property, I might have the date wrong, but if we did acquire the property, how much did we pay for it? How much have we spent since we bought it in relation to that property? And what's the ulterior goal of, of owning that property? I mean, personally, I noticed that it was changed from, you did a resolution to change it from light industrial to recreational, so I would assume you want to extend the block, but I, I'd just like to know what's going on, that's all.
All right. When I came up to the town board, that was the major goal. I live in the Farmville area, Stony...
I grew up too, I'm from Farmville.
John Vindale, that was a super fund that was basically polluted by the federal government and the responsible parties.
And contaminated the groundwater and everything else.
It was just a mess. People who lived in Farmville had a dream that that once would be cleaned up to the maximum cleanup, on top of that, be, you know, a park. So when the federal government and so-called responsible parties wanted to develop it brilliantly, I got to say, the town board led by John Vindale led the charge to actually trump them by, by condemning the property. With that, they were caught up, instead of putting the minimal cleanup, they put the maximal cleanup by re-condemning it. With that, it was probably the best purchase for the town of Oyster Bay and for Farmville, A number one that extends the park at Allen Park.
And it's going to go further, Massapee group, because it cleaned up the water source.
We were short on deals and everything else. We're at the point right now, we have development, and we have plans to develop our property to make it an extension of Allen Park.
So today, we're at the, like, the title, that you got, pass a resolution to, if, uh... To acquire the title to the property.
Right. We have a little litigation going on, since we did, like, eminent domain of, of a property, so it's council to represent us, to make sure everything goes together clean.
So do you have any, look, I'm sorry.
Do you prefer to counsel now, to officer Bill, or would you... Who would like to address it, Hal Meyer?
Frank, oh, Frank, bye, Frank. What's the question? I mean, I have questions, between the park and that property? Has cleaned up the groundwater, has taken a lot of...
That sounds good, I'm just curious.
Doing a great job.
Maybe when you think the trip... We might actually get into Brayton Valley and building the park.
Has, money, you know.
All right, all right. I just want to get an idea what was going on, that's all. Thank you for the answer, sir.
Not a problem.
Yeah, Frank, the question was on the resolution, correct, Rob?
Uh, yeah, I, I just wanted to find out, um, basically how much money we spent on this endeavor and so forth.
I have to get the number on the four year, I, I, you would think sometimes explains to me, you take a matter of conduct, that kind of network, it's called environmental name, it's cheap. So we had hearings, then we gave them an advance payment, then we go litigate the price, and we litigate the value of the property. So we gave them a advance payment, I guess you would, in layman's terms, would be a down payment. I'll get you the number. For some reason, I, maybe it was four and a half million, something like that. And then, it, it, and then if the, if there's further litigation on the, if they contest the value, which they did, because they say it's worth more. And that's why you have resolutions for appraisers on our side, they're going to have appraisers on their side, there's going to be a little battle of the experts.
Right.
And the court's going to make the final determination. And then, if it's more than four and a half million, we, if it's less than four and a half million, we got to get that out. That's, that's in a nutshell, but, how...
Thank you, Mr. Will. You got to go to eighty-seven?
We're up to eighty, did I miss eighty-six?
Eighty-six.
Oh, eighty-six, I'm sorry, eighty-six, you're right, you're right, I'm sorry. Um, basically, I'd just like to know, in eighty-six, um... Can you just explain what, what we're anticipating the use of these funds for?
On eighty-six, I don't have, I don't have my backup, I was...
It's for the appraisal of relocation property. As you know, we're going to have to relocate our offices on the North Service Road.
Okay.
And we're looking at getting property in this for appraisal.
By the way, before I... When I say I, I don't have, we all get our calendars in the matiflops last week, and we all see the resolutions before we come here today, we know what we're voting on. In fact, I don't have it in front of me, because you're going to have to see it. I just, I, I haven't permitted them to memory my number, but, yeah, I know the one you're... No, I have it here, I do, I have it now.
Yeah, forget it, you take... Eighty-seven? Okay, uh, this is, this is the, the, uh... The extension of the, of the five-year term with Winter Brothers. On eighty-seven, right?
Eighty-seven, yes, it is, it is the, uh, extension of the Winter Brother contract.
Right. A town-appointed panel is recommending Oyster Bay approve a five-to-ten-year contract. Actually, I, I just want to, just to familiarize, uh, anyone that's not, that, that's, that's unfamiliar with this, because this is, this is a pretty big, this is a pretty big resolution here. This is written back in 211. And, uh, what it says is, "A town-appointed panel is recommending Oyster Bay approve a five-to-ten-year contract with the waste hauler, estimated to be a hundred million dollars over ten years, to truck the town's garbage to a dump in the Syracuse area. The town board listened to the presentation from the panel's members at a public hearing held Tuesday at their board meeting, final action on the plan is expected for a month. The engineers and consultants on the panel favor the proposal by Winter Brothers, a Long Island Waste Management Company, and the town's current long-distance waste hauler. The company's proposal was not the lowest bid offered by six haulers competing for the contract. Hal Meyer, the town's environmental consultant, explained that state law does not require the town to accept the bid of the lowest bidder under certain circumstances, including certain environmental issues. The process is not only about money, but allows for other considerations, said Supervisor John Vindetto. Meyer said price can't be the only consideration when discussing an issue as costly and as complicated as garbage, one that affects every town resident in one layer or another. The Winter's contract was ranked first by a panel for seven reasons, Meyer said. The company has the current contract with the town and is well-known to town officials. Its parent company owns the landfill of state, and Winter's could guarantee the chain of custody of the town's garbage, Meyer said. The new contract we're going for five years and could be extended by another five, town officials said. The ten-year estimated cost of the contract is one hundred million dollars. Joseph Brotto-Gregano, president of Coastal Distribution, one of the bidders, objected to the recommendation during the public hearing. He said his company's bid was clearly lower, so that cost projections by Winter's are based on its assumption that its trucks will have State Department of Transportation permits allowing them to be overloaded. My accountant, the town, my accountant, that the town took that and all the environmental concerns as a consideration of making a proposal. I'd like to bring to your attention the opposite of New York State Controller, Town of Oyster Bay Financial Condition and Selected Financial Operations Report for the period of January first till October 31st, 2013. Before I do, I just want to ask the town board, is there anyone that hasn't read this financial condition report? Thank you. Okay. What the financial condition report is, in case for those that, that aren't aware, basically, the Controller's Office of New York State audits all the municipalities, it's not, this is not political opponents or citizens or residents making any statements. This is New York State Controller informing the Town of Oyster Bay of its deficiencies in their financial obligations. Excuse me for a second. The Solid Waste Disposals District, that's the SWDD, Solid Waste Disposal District, the unreserved fund balance went from 2.6 million surplus at the beginning of 210 to a 7.9 million deficit at the end of 211. The SWD fund deficit increased to 11.0 million in 212. Finally, the garbage collection district's fund sustained a 17.3 million operating deficit in 212, thus decreasing fund balance from a surplus of seven, seven million to a deficit of 10.3 million at the end of 212. The board, the, the Town of Oyster Bay appropriated a non-existent fund balance to fund the adopted budgets of their TOV and the SSD fund. The board appropriated more fund balance than was available to the TOV fund 208 through 210 budgets, causing an unexpected fund deficit to increase from 475,000 in 208 to 5.6 billion in 210. The unrestricted fund balance of the SWDD fund decreased by 10.5 million from a 2.6 billion surplus at the beginning of 210 to a 7.9 million deficit at the end of 211. Most of this deficit resulted from the town appropriating 6 million of fund balance it did not have to fund the 211 Solid Waste Disposal District budget, as the unrestricted fund balance at the end of 210 was reported deficit of $36,082. The SW, the SSD fund reporting, reported an operating deficit of $4 million in 2012, further increasing the deficit to 11.0 million at that date. And then, the state was on to, to inform the town, "It is imperative that town officials diligently analyze and project revenues and expenditures to accurately estimate unrestricted fund bonds at the end, at the year-end that may be appropriated to fund subs, to, to fund subsequent years' budgets. If the estimated fund balance is grossly overestimated or inaccurate, then the town runs the risk of adopting budgets that are not structurally sound, which will ultimately result in fiscal distress. The board must assure that there is a process to prepare and adopt, amend, prepare, adopt and amend budgets based on reasonably accurate assessments of revenue sources that fund budget appropriations. When estimating revenues in the annual budget, the board must have current and accurate garbage collection district fund reporting, excuse me. When estimating revenues in the annual budget, the board must have current and accurate records." Today, by the way, the, uh, financial report also explains that the gar, the, the town's garbage service makes up 70% of their annual expenditures. Today, the town's largest annual expenditure, 70%, according to New York State Controller, a contract worth $50 million, is being voted on without any type of hearing or inquisit, or inquisition to consider ways to improve the town's fiscal condition in this area, primarily, it seems, based on the past relationships between Winter Brothers and town officials. Oh, and by the way, I received the official transcripts and resolution material from the town's attempt to include East Norwich in town garbage district. Mr. Supervisor, you sat on the board during that incident. You know the correct procedure to extend the garbage district, yet by your own admission, you continue to act against procedure and reason to allow Winter Brothers to additionally profit to the 2 and 3/4 of a million dollars annually in my neighborhood. The town even has an agreement with Winter Brothers which removes them from the fiscal or financial burden of handling the town's recyclables in my neighborhood. I'm not sure what kind of relationship exists between town officials and Winter Brothers, but in my opinion, it shouldn't be the basis for extending this contract without investigating means to improve it for the town. I would have thought something like this, of this magnitude would have been vetted, vetted rather, better than this, before coming up for a pass-on resolution, 123. We're talking about $50 million.
Mike, are you done on that, right?
Yes, I am, thank you.
All right, before we go any further, uh, Bob McAvoy, maybe you can address, but before you do, Rob, I don't, you know, I try so hard, you have a lot of people here this morning who need to address the board, and, you know, you, you come here, uh... And we're really going over issues that have been discussed fully before, but there's an audience out there who hasn't heard the town respond, so I, I have to give a response again. I probably should have cut off the discussion, but, you know, you try not to be rude, you try to, you know, as I've always said to you, it was given a, an egg timer, but I refuse to use it. I just think residents have an absolute right to come up and address the board to their hearts and intent. They know they're making an effort to get here, it's not that often that they're really involved with their government, so when they come here, it's very special to them, and I don't like to limit anybody, but... Going back over the situation with the, uh, very quickly, I'm going to touch on it, I'm not going to hold it up to debate. Under, under the laws, the prevailing law in the town of Oyster Bay, we've covered the procedures for the situation in Nassau Shores. We've gone over it several times. Over the years, the residents of Nassau Shores have just simply not arrived at a consensus as to what they would like. Obviously, you would like to become part of the, the town's collection district, but you are one resident in Nassau Shores, and not everybody agrees with you. We've had meetings as recently as the past couple of weeks with the president of the Civic Association. Who was president with me at the meetings, Hal, you there? I know you did follow-up calls with the president. You know, again, I know we're meeting a dead horse here, but if you just bottom-line the audience and stop after that, because I don't want to continue this.
Well, we had several conversations, as recently as yesterday afternoon, I spoke with Doug Allowies, who's, I believe, is the president of the Nassau Shores Civic Association, and he said, best as I understand it, the committee of the Civic Association that was trying to deal with this issue, and I believe, Mr. Rip, attended their most, most recent meeting, and one of the members of the committee, Mrs. DiMaro, seemed to, in, in, in Mr. Allowies's view, uh, you should be the expert or the group's historian on what has happened with this issue. It's come up several times, and I believe they, I don't have the minutes of meeting, but from what I was told, they discussed kind of the history of it, and that there, every time it's been looked into, there's been a split in the community. So there is no consensus, and Mr. Allowies said there certainly was no view of the Civic Association that he would feel comfortable expressing to the board, because the community seemed to be so split on the issue.
And the bottom line, Bob, again, I'll say it one more time, I've never heard it before, because you would like to have, uh... You would like to have Nassau Shores become part of the collection district. That's just not sufficient to...
I misunderstood, I'm doing it, I'm doing it.
Let me, let me finish, let me finish, please, let me finish. That's not sufficient motivation for the town to take it upon itself and impose upon some 1,500 homes a tax or, or a change in services that they haven't indicated they want. This, this town board is not going to impose, I said it the last time you were here, and it's the same language I'm using again, in fact, but I want to make it clear to the audience, and this is going to be the last time I'm going to talk about this. The town on its own will not, I mean, unless there was some overriding telling, you know, for example, let's say Winter Brothers stopped showing up for, for work and wasn't picking up the garbage, yeah, then I think the town might have to step in, in the interest of the public health, safety, and welfare, and get the job done. But absent those kind of overriding circumstances, the town is not going to impose its will on the residents of Nassau Shores, it's their call. Some of the residents like the idea, because their, their taxes might actually go down. Other residents may not like the idea, because presumably their taxes are going to go way up. And I think this has to be something that needs to be resolved, and we need the will of the community. I don't know, how did I, that...
That's my understanding, that's certainly what, not speaking for them, but what the Civic Association president expressed to me yesterday.
All right, Bob McAvoy, on the financial...
On the financial part, the, the deficits that were mentioned in that report are primarily due to monies that were paid to Verizon on behalf of their lawsuit for their telephone poles not generating garbage or solid waste, and us counting on that revenue to come back from Nassau County in a successful lawsuit.
Okay, which is on its way.
Well, that part of it, we, we haven't budgeted it again, and we're not counting on it, so when it does come in, it'll be somewhat of a windfall, if and when it does show up, so...
Well, except now we have judgments, it's...
Part of the prior part.
Yeah.
All right. All right, just a response to that. I, I'm sure you read the whole report, but part of the criticism...
I don't have it memorized.
Right, part of the, one of the very explicit criticisms of the state is the town isn't supposed to be allocating funds, prospective funds, right? Um, and also, I'm sorry, I, I really, I really appreciate how much effort you've put into this Winter Brothers in my neighborhood, but I'm only up here today speaking about the resolution. It's just my concern that you're going to pass a $50 million contract without any further hearing or anything.
No, no, but you did comment, you made a comment.
Yes, I did, but that's not, that wasn't, that wasn't my purpose. I, I appreciate you, I appreciate your responding to it, you're obviously well-prepared to respond to it, but just so that we're on the same page, I didn't come up here to speak about something that I addressed you before, I came up here to speak about these resolutions, and that's what I did, thank you.
Whether you intended or not, you spoke about it, and it needed to be addressed, and I addressed it.
Okay, so, so will you vote on this $50 million contract today? Will you decide to look into this a little more and see if the town could save some money in the next five years?
Well, when, when we have the call of the calendar, you'll know, but I believe the board members are prepared to vote, I think.
Okay, thank you very much.
If I may, and I know the board is aware of this, but because we have pretty full attendance today, people can characterize the contract differently, and I'm not going to try to debate these little numbers, but I will only point out that the contract contains what we call the termination for convenience clause, and it's a sole option of the town, which means... of the town, which means, in simple English, that if, if something improves or changes in the sanitation transportation industry, and we believe that there is a quote-unquote better deal out there, the town can cancel the contract on a hundred and eighty days. Notice, so, so I would view this as giving the town the security of its five-year agreement, but in effect, it's a rolling six-month obligation on the town part to have to continue with it. I know the board's aware of that, Mr. Supervisor, but I thought the board is very much aware of that.
You know, before I go, I just wanted to make one last comment on something that you said, Mr. Supervisor, just a second ago. It seems to me that the town doesn't want to impose its will on fifteen-hundred residents, because those residents might be afraid of having to pay fair tax in the Town of Oyster Bay that everybody else has to pay. That's what you said?
No, that's not what I said. I gave you an example of why the community...
Exactly what you said, that they didn't want to pay tax.
Well, don't be rude and don't interrupt me. Rob, you haven't done that before. Don't do that.
I apologize.
It makes me, when you interrupt me, it tells me that, uh, I think I'm saying the right thing. But let me get my statement. I never said to you that that's the reason why. I gave you an example. Some residents will benefit from a tax standpoint, others will not. Other residents have told me they love the service Winter Brothers has given them. They don't want town service. Other residents have said to me, you know why? We saw how well the town troops performed in the aftermath of Hurricane Sandy, and now we do want town services. So you have, you have a community that's split, there's a number of reasons over whether or not they would like to continue the Winter Brothers operation, or whether or not they'd like to go to the town. I presume there are other issues which haven't been brought to my attention yet, but you have a very sharply divided community. And that's been my experience for all during my tenure here, and it's come up quite a few times, since we've been dealing with the Civic Association as recently as, as, uh, last week. And while I understand you would like to have the town collection, you are only one voice out of very, very many. You are not the consensus. So you could certainly contribute to the consensus by working through the Civic Board.
I, I will. It's just my opinion, and, and, you know, we're all entitled to our own opinions, and it's just my opinion that if I was in charge, I would take the consideration of every resident in Town of Oyster Bay. I would, I would, I would weigh that heavier than just a small portion, fifteen-hundred people. Mr. McAvoy, oh, you're, excuse me. Mr. McAvoy mentioned the recent litigation, okay? The, the sanitation district taxes have gone up dramatically because of the recent litigation that was lost, not only by the town, by a number of towns in the county in regards to the utilities. Okay, people are paying more in taxes, all right? If some people aren't paying their fair share, then other people are paying more. That's just my opinion. We can disagree. It's okay. It's just my opinion.
Okay, but before you go away, I just want to make it very, very clear. I want to underscore what you just said, because you stated exactly what the town board is trying to do. We're trying to build a consensus. Your vote counts, Doug Allowies's vote counts, there was a reference to a Mrs. Demaro, our vote counts, but there are only, there are only, that's only three votes. In fact, what you, what you probably don't know, I think a couple of years ago, we did an area-wide mailing, I wouldn't say fifteen-hundred homes, that, wouldn't be that much, and we asked for a response, you know, how you feel about the, uh, the issue. And we got eighty responses, out of, only eighty responses out of the fifteen-hundred, and they were split. It's, it's an, it's an amazing phenomenon, but there's a real logjam down there. And we are trying to determine the will. We're not listening to any one voice. Just like I said to you, where you are one voice, you go vote counts, but we're not going to act just because you want it, or a Mrs. Demaro, or a Mrs. Vindale, or anybody else wants it. We're trying to build a consensus.
We should act for the well-being of the town.
We should act for the well-being of the greatest, of the greatest number of people.
Yes, yes, I agree with you. Thank you.
Thank you.